We had called this regular workshop meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. Council, you should have a copy of tonight's agenda at your place and you've had time to review it, but first off, I want to present the agenda here and there's some consent items on here also and some minutes for the regular workshop meeting on June 20th and regular meeting on June 20th, entertaining motion to adopt the minutes, the agenda and the consent items.
Mayor, I believe number nine, we would like to have that removed.
Okay, we're gonna take a number nine off, okay. Just on your paper, so, no, it's gone.
Move to adopt the agenda with the exclusion of item nine on the consent items?
Second.
And the minutes.
And the minutes.
And the consent items, right, okay. Second from Mr. Thomas, any discussion here, not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Ms. Washington is unable to be with us tonight, but we'll start with the workshop, item number 10 on the agenda here, and this is a presentation on the Jacksonville Tourism Development Authority, it's their quarterly report. Dr. Woodruff, if you want to preface that.
Yes, Mayor, Mr. Council, let's do that again. You have to remember that six weeks of being without meetings, I have forgotten how to introduce, so I apologize. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for allowing the staff to have the summer break. I know many of you had the opportunity to get out of town. Over the last six weeks, we've had a number of important things accomplished and two of them actually were covered by your consent agenda. And I do, while we're not going to make a presentation on them, I do want to specifically point out that with the adoption of the consent agenda this evening, you approved a lease to the Sturgeon City Board for the Environmental Center. Secondly, in the consent agenda, there was the award of the bid for the construction of the building. We are very pleased that the council and Sturgeon City Board have been able to work to this point. We do appreciate everyone's cooperation. Currently, our schedule then will be with the approval this evening, that we will begin negotiations for actual contract documents later this week, with the anticipation that we should have a contract signed by the end of this month, with the hope that by sometime in early October or possibly earlier, we will be giving the notice to proceed. We'll also be discussing with you and the Sturgeon City Board and the TDA, a groundbreaking ceremony at an appropriate time. But again, I commend you all for the leadership that you have provided on this. For the workshop this evening, we have two items. One is the quarterly update with the Jacksonville Tourism Development Authority, we commonly refer to as the TDA. The second is an update by the city staff on the land treatment site, and that will include an update on the forest management, and that will also include discussions of the blue frog experiment which we have been doing out there. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Lazera, who is the chairman of the TDA. Will anyone else in the TDA need to take this seat? I will recess. Okay, welcome to the stage.
Thank you, Dr. Woodruff. I appreciate the opportunity to give this presentation this evening. As we committed, we want to maintain quarterly updates, a more in detail update, and that's what we are ready to do today. So, thank you for allowing us to do that. First, let me begin by saying that we welcome two new board members, and we had a swearing in ceremony just a week or so ago. Councilmember Randy Thomas and Miguel Murillo were sworn in, and so we're very pleased to have them as part of our team. Unfortunately, Randy, I know you've listened to a lot of these updates at that meeting and brought you up to speed, so a lot of it's going to be repetitive, but it's important to provide information so everybody knows who we are, what we've done, and what we plan on doing. So, we're very pleased to have them. We also adopted a director emeritus status provision, and our first member is William Hemingway, Bill Hemingway, as most of you know, and we were very proud to have done that. He has been a huge asset to the city and community, and so that was a great moment for us. The next order of business I'll go over is the legislative change that has just been fully confirmed. Senator Brown, as most of you know, has been trying to help us get this, as we call it, flip done, and I'll just go over it. Basically, the way that we were mandated to spend our money was one-third for capital expenditures and two-thirds for promotion. One of our target goals was not to duplicate spending with the county tourism, so obviously in that category left a lot of money for promotion, and we had been seeking a flip, as we call it, so that we would have more money for capital expenditures and less money for promotion because combining with our efforts with the county, we believe that we're pretty effective in our community in doing so with the partnership that we have. So, again, I want to really thank Senator Brown. He has really gone the extra mile and worked extremely hard to make this happen, and it passed into law Thursday, August 3rd, 2017. And here is the statute. As you can see, it's been completed. It has a 10-year sunset. And later on, we'll talk about some of our thoughts on these capital projects and where we want to go from here. But it does have a 10-year sunset and allows us to expense monies for capital projects.
What does that mean? What do you, why is there a sunset for that revision?
Well, as you know, the restaurant and tourism lobby is very strong in North Carolina, and they believe that most of the money should be spent on promotion. And so, that has been pretty much set in stone for a long time. There's been some exceptions, but to give a little bit more history, in today's world, the one-size-fits-all doesn't work anymore. There's many communities have different needs and different ways that they need to spend money, as long as it's tourism-related. It's collected by the travel industry and tourism industry, so the theory is it needs to get put back in that industry so that we can increase more heads-on-beds, essentially. And many of us believe that as long as we're spending money to put heads on beds, then we should be allowed the flexibility as an individual community to spend that money in a better fashion. And so, while our community has our own set of needs where it comes to how much do we want to spend on promotion, and can we keep people here longer if we had more destination facilities, i.e., we'll talk about sports, we'll talk about the Memorial Gardens events, and, you know, many things that make that up. But essentially, every community is different, and that one-size-fits-all is just not working anymore. So, there's still a continued move to get it completely reversed, but he was able to work out this sunset so that if we were to leverage a capital project, we would have 10 years in which we could utilize those funds for. That doesn't mean any project has been confirmed or set in stone or anything like that. That's just the availability of funds to do something of that nature.
You mean it's just for that project, specific project, or the legislation terminates its 10 years?
It's a 10-year sunset.
So, we know.
As of today.
In year nine, then, we would only, y'all could only obligate one year for a...
Yes, if it's not used, unless there's a change between now and 10 years.
Are there any specific parameters there as to what kind of projects or what basis for, or is it something's going to be covered?
No, there's no parameters. This is the law as it's written, and we provided, or we can provide a copy for you. John, do you read it any other way?
No, sir, the law, as the mayor pro tem has said, was passed Thursday, last Thursday, August 3rd, because it required an additional reading in the Senate. It is retroactive to July 1, 2017, and will go 10 years, and is not obligated to any project or projects. It just does, as the mayor pro tem said, a flip. Two-thirds of the money now can be used for capital projects, one-third promotional. For your information, and Gail, the finance director and I, and others have talked, clearly there will be a delineation of the money collected through June 30th, 2017. That money will be segregated in the sense that whatever's collected through that date, June 30th, 2017, will still be two-thirds promotion, one-third capital. And then, from July 1 forward, two-thirds capital, one-third promotion, and again, will be budgeted, and the mayor, Gail and I even talked about, clearly the TDA will do a budget amendment to reflect this flip, if you will, and probably will be seeking counsel to do a budget amendment since, as you'll recall, the TDA money is also part of y'all's budget as far as showing for this year, that is, 2018 to the night, well, 2018 budget, we call it, will be two-thirds capital, one-third promotion.
Any other questions? Next slide.
This is a, what we call pink money and green money. Pink money is to promote and travel, and obviously, green money is for capital projects. So, I will turn it over to Glenn now to sort of cover a lot more in-depth detail of what we're doing, and we have some people here that want to speak to us, so Glenn, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, and thank you all, and we'll just go through this as it was. Obviously, in the part about the change, I should take the word proposed off there because now it is changed as it is, we're going to be spending the money like current projects that are already designated for the green money this year. And the authority will then decide how they wish to do the others, but it has been the intention, we feel, that they're going to want to continue the strategy implementation that we're going to talk to you about this evening. And of course, we have the benefit of some of that pink money that's been left over from years past that we can add to that, that can kind of ease our slope into what we have done and that we've been spending money on out of that previous two-thirds money as it was to that effect. We do want to talk to you about receipts and what's out there as it was, and this is an indicator of what our total collections have been since the first year that you started collecting this tax and then remitting it to the Tourism Development Authority. As you saw during FY 11, and many of you know this from personal experiences, there were a lot of deployments, returns, and construction. We're going to be talking about that in just a moment. And new facilities started coming online in FY 13, and we have now seen a gradual increase that has occurred from FY 16 from 15, and obviously, this year FY 17, we finished with a 5% collection higher than the fiscal year before. And not all facilities have yet reported, but it'll be marginal in any more money that comes in that's counted, if it does count to that end as it was there. And so, this was an important note that we wanted to make to you is that where this money comes from, and as you can see, 54% from the Western Boulevard area, McDaniel Drive, generally that is the area along McDaniel Drive and those facilities that front on Marine Boulevard in that general area. And then, everything else in the city is in that all other. So, you know, from the Western Boulevard and McDaniel Drive area, you see that you have some 75% of all the collections that have been, this is for FY 17, but the historical collection has been this way pretty much since we began the project as it was there. So, now, we're going to talk about strategy, and this is when we go and introduce some more people to talk about some things with you. The strategy when we began had to depend on what we knew to be the people who were staying here. And we got North Star to help us identify some of that from some interviews they did with people and some of the facts that we're able to discern from things such as a report that deals with lodging and who stays in it. And it comes as no surprise to anyone around this table that 60%, particularly in the early year, was here visiting their loved ones or something that was connected to military or something to that effect, and that the remainder was here for business, for sporting events, and for temporary work because obviously, the construction did fill up some of the facilities at that time. So, the concept when we began was four-pillared, and it was to build things that people can visit and things that can draw overnight stays that the mayor pro tem already indicated, and now it's going to be advanced even more with the flip, and then supporting activities that would draw overnight stays and events that encourage visitation. And of course, to make those events in such a way that their professionalism would make people want to come and participate in these events over the others. And then, to invest in programs that have future proposals, potential, excuse me, for overnight stays as it was. To promote those destinations and events that we can talk about and including sports. And then, collaborate, and you heard the mayor pro tem say, and he has been very adamant in this throughout the tenure on the authority, don't duplicate what the county has done. And we have a very good relationship with Lorette Legan and the staff that has been administering the county funds and giving their, what their tourism strategy is. We also funded some overnight stay generators, and we were always wanting to work with the state effort, not to duplicate what they're doing, but to complement them. Now, with some events, there's been some issues. We've done some things that draw overnight stays, and you're going to see a few moments of some of the successes for that, but events in themselves are rather slow to grow. They don't take off immediately. I mean, think about things such as the seafood festival in Morehead City. Started on rather modest, you know, overnight stays and things like that, and it's grown, so it's more than 100,000 people participate in that event in Morehead City. That did not happen overnight. We've also had some facilities that have limited the growth, and you're going to see some of them just absolutely don't have any more space to grow. They cannot add more people to who's attending their event. And some events have volunteer leaders, and so, the rather wave of success and some not-so-successful years sometimes has to go with the enthusiasm of those leaders that are volunteers in many cases. And obviously, the longer the event, the more chance there is of overnight stays. In 2010 and 11, we knew the occupancy was so high that it was going to cause some other things, and we saw that nearly immediately. We saw national chains asking for information about the occupancy rates and reading reports that were industry-wide, and they obviously saw opportunity. And so, new construction was authorized and people invested in them. Today, the Hilton Garden Inn opened, and so, that's at the end of what we know to be some building, but we understand there's yet another facility that has come into the city hall that has proposed to be built here in Jacksonville as it was. When we began in 2010, there were not but 1,844 rooms. It was challenging, and some of these rooms didn't meet the standards that some sporting events wanted. But now, excuse me, we have more than 2,500 rooms within the city limits. That is a remarkable amount of growth, as we hear from our industry professionals and others that tell us, that is not something that you see in a period of time that's less than seven years as it is. And toward that end, did you want to say something?
I'm trying to get you a glass of water.
Oh, I'm fine.
So, who says that? Would someone pour Glenn a glass of water?
Thank you, sir, I appreciate your kindness. But the bottom line was, is that that's an impressive thing. And so, obviously, some of you attended our event in May, in which Judy Randall and her firm reported on who they thought was staying in our facilities. Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. And so, theirs came out a little bit different, but in some ways collaborated what we already knew to be. And that was that 34% were military, and you can see business and leisure and meetings. And of course, we were kind of sad to see that sports was only 2.6%, but we do recognize that that's a significant number of the overnight stays of what was then 1,800 rooms times 20, you know, 365, and the go from that effect. But we think some of that business stays really are related to the military, and this was conducted in March, and it was done by interview, so there was not an empirical audit of what, who stayed in what room. This was volunteered information that was out there. And we think some of those meetings was probably military, to be candid. Some of the people came in, I mean, we know all the time, we get that type of interest. And toward the same, we think some of that leisure was actually family travel that was related to sporting events as it was there. But even so, that sporting number is a number that's probably in the 2,400 to 2,500-room nights a year, and which is no small number in and of itself from that effect. Now, remember what we had from the past, that 60% were here visiting their loved ones. So, the strategy of extending the stay, if we could get them to stay a shoulder stay, an extra day or two, that was a logical thing that we could do. And having events and festivals and things like that was obviously something we thought, knowing what our old self knew, was something that we could hopefully affect and advance to that effect. But what we found was, is that having event-centered, and Councilmember William Willingham is going to find great solace in hearing some of the words we're going to say to this thing, and some institutional events, that what we have moved to is events and experiences, because people want that type of experience. They want something that they can take home, that's posted on social media. I went here and did this, that type of event. And so, now, we're concentrating on beaches and all the other things that are out there, activities that we can do to enhance experiences, and then adding experiences where people can come here and say, I want to experience that, I've read about that, I've seen that, I've, you know, had experience to that effect there. And consequently, so, some of the strategy is extend that stay, that's still a marketable thing to do, and then find some bargain stays with that beach benefit. Stay in Jacksonville and enjoy the beach. Reunions and retirements, that's almost a duh moment for us, but we weren't doing that, and we had no mechanism to do that. You're going to hear how we're doing that now. And obviously, we want to focus on the hero's welcome. We strongly believe that people want to come here because of the military, but they want to come here because of what the military represents. They want to experience some of those activities that are associated with it. We found that happened when we were surprised by the number of people who wanted to come and be a part of the 4th Marine Division Final Muster that we did year before last. And they wanted to participate in watching these people, the youngest of whom was 92, say goodbye, that this was their final time that they were going to gather. We saw this, and we had our military, our 2nd Marine Division 75th anniversary, many of you up there, Councilman Warden modeling his behavior from the stage that became legendary in print. But, you know, we found that people really did want to participate, and we had significant visitation for a day that was pretty cold and pretty awesome out there, too, at the same time, that they wanted to give honor to these Marines. And obviously, on a very hot day last July, we saw the number of people who wanted to come out and participate to watch the dedication of the Montford Point Marines Memorial. And we really learned deeply there, the power of story. People wanted to hear the stories about these people whose activities had not been told before, about what it was that meant to them personally, and how they could connect to that type of history as it was. And so, now, with the help of these people to my left, we have had some tourism assets that we have put into four columns, four things that we're going to look at as pillars to borrow a word from the Sports Commission's strategic plan. Military and military-related, sports, obviously, great return on the dollar, outdoor sports, more outdoor activities, particularly water-based activities, and then other experiences that you can get by coming here as it is. Now, of these, here are some key components: telling our story, the reunion, tours, sports development, and enhancing the visitor experience. And I'm going to concentrate just for a second on the telling our story. We obviously have staff that can produce excellent videos and can tell your story effectively, but we found when we partnered with the state to let them come down and get their experiences and tell the story about where heroes train, they saw it with a different eye than we did. They saw it in such a way that they have expanded what they know about our community and such. We also noted that in partnering with the state, we got it up on the state website, the Visit NC website. We couldn't have done that before, and this was something that I will admit that Lorette Legan helped us make the decision to advance this type of partnership with the state. I'm now going to introduce to you Teresa Beecham and Susan Dozer. Susan Dozer is with DK Communications. We met her through, actually, Lorette again, she actually connected us to her. She has considerable experience. She's previously a writer with Southern Living. She has experience with particularly the beer and wine industry. She knows something about travel and destination travel, and we were, she came to us highly recommended. Teresa Beecham, we drug her to the table to help us out with the efforts that we had on trying to do things with some of the events and festivals. And she has, she's had quite the education in tourism, which is marketing but with a different slant. And so, she has really helped us out in advancing what she knows about our community and able to help tell that story and making so that our strategy can advance now. So, we're going to turn them over because we're going to talk about, it's all about the experience and what it is that we can do.
In the tourism, thank you Glenn, in the tourism world today, it is truly, they're promoting, it is all about an experience. It's what older folks and millennials and baby boomers, everybody across the board wants to have that experience. If you've seen this on UNC TV, you may be familiar with that. They do 96 Hours in one location. They promote it on their social media as well as on UNC TV, and they'll highlight a town. Well, what happens is, people will come to a community for a gateway event, let's say, Oktoberfest or the Marine Half Marathon or whatever the case may be, and then they want to know, okay, I'm doing a 96, I don't know what that is, what, you know, what else can I do while I'm there? What can fill my weekend? So, this show just kind of speaks to, this is what's happening in the tourism world. It's all about the experience. This lady here, if this doesn't sum it up for everybody, I don't know what would, she came to town, she participated in the Marine Corps Half Marathon last year. This is her at the finish line, taking a selfie with the Marine draping the medal over, the finishing medal over her neck, and she posted everywhere on social media. This was her experience. It was on her bucket list, she told us. So, that is one thing that we found out about the Marine Corps Marathon, I will add, is 60% of the runners are women, and we probably had 10 of them that mentioned on the survey, this was on their bucket list. This was just what they wanted to do. So, it really speaks. We also know that in today's world, in the tourism world, people are into food and dining. They will travel to have a unique experience. It does not have to be a five-star restaurant. They will travel, you go to a town, I know you probably do what I do, if you go to a town, you want to know where the locals go, where the locals eat, you know? I want a great hamburger, I want a shrimp burger, whatever the case may be. Who knew 45 years ago, when I had my first Paul Parker, woo, that the Paul Parker would become a cornerstone that people would talk about and a little nugget, secret nugget that Jacksonville had that we could capitalize on?
And Teresa, that's exactly how we ended up placing the Paul Parker on Southern Living's list of 50 undiscovered gems in North Caroli, in the South last fall. So, it's that kind of thing that makes a big, big difference. And so, when we talk about the experience, and then it ties back, tourism is about small businesses. And we were able to not only talk about the Paul Parker, but if you talk tourism, you talk where to get it, and that's when Jeff's Burgers Dogs &amp; Shakes becomes a part of that story. So, it's all that circle of life with getting the people in. How many fishermen in the room? Lorette, of course you are. Okay, Lorette, how do you decide what kind of bait to use?
Whatever they tell me at the bait shop.
Does it make any difference what you're fishing for?
No.
No, okay. Well, my daddy taught me, we use worms with bran and we use those little, the real lures with bass, okay? So, if you're trying to figure out who you're going to reel in, you're going to use different bait. Well, here's what we did, we matched, is that working for you?
Yeah, what I was going to say is, it shows that Lorette is a fisherman, not a catcherman.
I love it, I love it. So, what we're doing too, with our whole, you know, as we're trying to reel these people in, we're going to use different baits. Sometimes, we want them to read about us in a prominent publication like the Washington Post. So, when we started pitching, we took the whole Montford Point Marine dedication, we pitched it to the Washington Post. It was the perfect story for them on the print edition, it actually ran on the front page, and then the online went crazy, 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 and it's still up, and you can see that story today. It's about like getting that bait and the content matched together. So, certainly, the media is one place where you're going to see that kind of traction. We also pitched the Montford Point Memorial to the Associated Press. We started with our Associated Press desk here in Raleigh. We got incredible cooperation from that. They put it out on the National Wire. We went to 400 outlets across the country, a few international, and this included National Fox News, Yahoo News, and UPI, several other major news portals. So, this is how we get the message out there, and we take it a little bit farther than just down the street to Wilmington or to Raleigh, although those are key drive markets, so. And then, as we do that, we also are looking, you know, we talked about experiences, we're looking at the Memorial Gardens, we're using news hooks like Memorial Day, Veterans Day, July 4th. We're also, when we talk about staying an extra day, we're using those four pillars that Glenn was talking about, the kayaking, the amazing paddle boarding, those kinds of things. If people know about those things, they can stay here and do them. They can't do that unless they know about them. And then, we also, as we talk about the bait and that kind of thing, we decided, one of the key things as we look at from our strategy, becoming that millennial destination, well, we have so many millennials here because the base is here, right? Well, and it makes sense, if a lot of millennials are looking for cheaper beach vacations, we're perfect, like Glenn said, stay in Jacksonville, then go to... we're perfect, like Glenn said, stay in Jacksonville, then go to the beach. And so millennials are perfect targets for this message. Well, millennials, how many of y'all have millennials in your family right now? God love you, I do too. And, and so they, they receive news in a different way. It's on their phone, everything is on their phone. So we're communicating to those people who have the images and the pictures and the right match of content. And so we're, we're targeting that. Also, we're looking at retirement. Retirement, the people who are looking at retirement, trying to plan where they're going to retire, they'll visit four or five different cities before they make that decision about, okay, this is going to be it. Jacksonville has incredible healthcare, we've got great infrastructure here, and we're not as expensive as some of the other coastal destinations, right? So we want to get that little piece of travel when people are exploring retirement destinations. So looking at retirement certification is something we're doing, and we're also looking at targeting magazines that talk specifically to those people who are retiring. We're also continuing to develop the quality of events. Teresa and I are going to head out to the folks to talk to Oktoberfest right after we finish here with you guys. And we're looking at ways to elevate those events so that it's not just an amazing Jacksonville event, but it's an event that will draw people from outside and get them to stay overnight. Now, we talked about placing things in the Washington Post or magazines or outlets. When we talk about reaching those millennials, that means we're looking at digital influencers. Those are people who have a lot of followers on Instagram or Facebook or Twitter, those kinds of things, and they have their own websites that they manage. Sometimes a little unorthodox, they don't always do things exactly the way, you know, like a trained reporter, like our amazing people here would, but there's room for both in that mix and we'll target messages appropriately to them. And then Glenn, you'll hear him talk a little bit about the properties that we own that become our own message, like our visit NC, or visit Jacksonville NC dot com website, our social media channels on Facebook, and some of the paid advertising that Teresa helps us do through the state with USA Today and some other travel opportunities. Now, I wanted to tell you a little bit about the fam tour we had last spring. Now, I have to say, but it's not every day that I get snow on a fam tour, but we did last year. And what a fam tour is, we call it a familiarization tour, and that's where we bring some key journalists in or writers, that kind of people. And, and we give them a chance to have that experience here so that they can go back home and write about it. You'll see that the, the young women that we attracted, one is a part of a mother-daughter team that has her own website in Greenville, another one from Charlotte, and she was a fitness and travel writer. They had never been in a military community before, that was a very new experience for them. Who knew that Saigon Sams would have been a huge hit? And, and I have to tell you, when I first discovered Saigon Sams, I was kind of excited about that, too. Best deals on cast iron. And, but you, you never know, you never know, right? And then, you know, you have some amazing assets here, Teresa talked about culinary tourism and food and wine being a driver. You have Walton's Distillery here that is making some very nice fruited moonshine. Well, what's hot in the food world right now, cocktails. What makes a good cocktail? This moonshine. So when we invited our, our folks here, we asked one of the distillers to come and kind of give a little behind-the-scenes story about the distillery, and it was the perfect thing to take out on the boat with Bayonet Cruises. One of the places is we've learned more about our writers and, and gone on this journey is that we find that military-owned businesses, people like writing about that. There's a whole category of people who are looking for those kinds of businesses to support. Bayonet Cruises is owned by a former, retired Marine. I've learned never to say former, and I know not to say soldier, I'm kidding. And so, my dad was Army, sorry. And so, so we, we took them out on that cruise. And then they also get to see not only part of the residential area, but then this incredibly beautiful water that you have, and they get to have a, a chance to talk about, I'm, I'm going ahead there, but then they get a chance to see some of your history and understand your water stories. This is Sarah Schlichter, she was the one from Charlotte, big-time jogger and runner. She went to the St. Patty's Engineers Challenge and competed and finished first in her age group. So she was like with it, and we had such a good time. She had never been in a race like this, the whole obstacle course totally appealed to her. And she told, you know, when she blogged about it, her, her blog is heavily followed by other runners. And she's also really interested in coming back this year for the US Marine Corps Half Marathon. Now, since we're getting them out on the water, we're showing them Jacksonville, you have to tell the story of Sturgeon City and the amazing success and turnaround that the city led to, to, to the healing of Wilson Bay and the role that Sturgeon City plays in that. So what we've learned is, I think this is a story that I want to tell a lot more. We're finding out what layers, what combination of key message points will make this a sticky story, but I think this is a place for incredible growth and I think it's something that you guys can be super proud of. So this is an area we're really looking at. What's also super cool about the Sturgeon City story is that now we can take people kayaking, we can take them paddle boarding, from what I understand, that's not something that would have happened five years ago. And of, this is back on our, our fam tour with our media, this was one of their favorite memories. All of them led and, and talked a lot about the kinds of opportunities. And your amazing outfitter that's right there in the marina, they, they have outfitting shops, I don't know if you all know, but in multiple places up and down the southeastern coast. And so you've got very, very high-quality people that have come in here and invested here and are helping us tell that story. Talked about those young Marines, and so when our, our media guests were here, we also took them out to Hot Import Nights. What was important about them seeing Hot Import Nights, not that all these girls were wild about cars, but it helped them understand the kind of events that are here that may not be in Charlotte, which is a banking town, or, or other kinds of places. Again, kind, kind of coordinating that message so that we tell the story. And then the story runs, this is Sarah and, and her with her finish line and, and then the Carolina burger and Saigon Sams, different images, and her blog went live and it's still getting traffic. Now, what was gratifying to me especially, I'm all about the bottom line, is that we saw businesses that we took these writers to already say, after they came, my business picked up because people in those areas saw that and they came and they booked. That's what we're after, money in this community right here, overnight stays. Now Teresa's going to tell you this story about Black Southern Phil.
So we had, when Susan coordinated the fam tour, you invite all these journalists in, obviously it doesn't fit with their schedule. What happens is, in, in many cases, and in this case in particular, this young lady could not come. She was interested enough by the information, the bait that we put out to her, and she was, two weeks later called Susan and said, hey, I'm going from, I'm traveling from DC on business, I'm going back to Charleston where she lives. I would really like to see if I could stop by and check this out. So she called on Glenn and I and we hosted her for the weekend, her and her husband. She has an amazing following. Her blog site has 388,000 unique visitors a month worldwide. It's huge what she does. She has over 13,000 people that follow her on Instagram. So we took her out and toured particularly the gardens. Her father was in the Navy and he was a little bit older when she was, when she came around. And by the, she was so moved, by the time she left, the most important thing she said to me, or what resonated the most to me, with me, was she said that it, she always knew that her father obviously was in the Navy, but it, it had such a much stronger impact and a much deeper meaning to her after having visited the gardens. So she was really, really moved. We also saw when she left, if you could have seen the comments and the, the things that people comment on and how they participate and engage with her about her experience in Jacksonville, and that's what you want. That's how we get us on the map worldwide when people are in the area and they'll come and, and seek us out as a destination for a weekend.
One of the things that gratifies me is that I'm not always able to be here, and so when Glenn and Teresa start telling the story in Jacksonville, I always know that my folks are in good hands. Lorette, you've been so amazing as we coordinated, and so we have just such great assets here and I appreciate that. We've also told our story in cooperation with Visit NC. You'll see some of the outlets there that we pitch at those stories or those conferences and we're following up with them. Again, looking at both state and wider. Now, one of the things, because we're a military town, we worked with Visit North Carolina to, to identify some folks who really specialize in military spouse writing. Jo Mygosh is an amazing young woman. She's been, she writes for spouses whose husbands are on deployment, but a lot of those people also travel and they keep following her even after their husbands or spouses or wives come back, you know, from, from being deployed. She at first was like, oh, you've got memorials, great. But what happened was she came here and she was like, oh my gosh, these are great. You know, she's from the DC area, she thought she'd seen all the coolest things. She came here, she said, this is worth talking about. She did a lot of work in her blog about military-owned businesses, both male and female, all different kinds, and she loved some of the stores and shops that she found here. So she put together this piece about 11 must-do activities in Jacksonville. This Facebook post of her blog was shared more than 3,000 times, like to other people's Facebook, but they wanted it on their page. That is engagement and they trust her and that's the kind of way we spread our, our message along that community that's already invested and, and excited about that military experience. You see lots and lots of reach, she was a very good investment. We paid $6,000, that sounds like a lot, to, to, to work with Visit North Carolina. That included all of her expenses while she was here, included paying her for some of her work. She did say that the blog was sponsored. But the return, if we had had to reach all those people through her social media, through all those kinds, if we had paid to reach them, we would have spent more than $65,000. So we got a pretty good return on our investment, $8.57 for every dollar spent.
Thank you. Now, she's talked at that point about what was some, some earned media, and we've talked about placed media, where we buy it and put it in some sort of event. Now, we're going to talk about some owned media that we have. And one of those things is the, is the Facebook page for Visit Jacksonville NC. It couldn't just be the Facebook page for the city, it had to be a Visit the Facebook page because the writing for Visit somewhere and the writing for what government does are different. We'd like you all to please go to the Visit Jacksonville NC page and like that page so you can see what it is that we post there and what happens on this matter. The, the webpage of visitjacksonvillenc.com, this is so that you come here and we have multiples of those, are also talking about the experiences that you can have while you're being here. These, and you see how we're emphasizing at this time about the Congressional Gold Medal Ceremony and about the import of that. And we also, though, have found, we have to cross-promote, we have to put it in the city's webpage, but this one's more historical, it's more a deeper dive. It tells more of the deep story about how it came to be that Lejeune Memorial Gardens are there in a much more exhaustive way than more of the experiential thing that you get by visiting those places and doing it as it is. And we're going to be spending some considerable amount of time upgrading our own media for these type of purposes. Now, I mentioned before about these tourism assets, about things that these four pillars that we're going to look at. And we want to mention just for a moment about sports and what the sporting events are. And I'd like now to introduce some with the Mayor Protem's permission there, M. Scott Smith. He is the new Executive Director for the Jacksonville Onslow Sports Commission. And Scott, if you would, just say a few words about your background.
Well, I come from Chattanooga, Tennessee. I've been in Jacksonville for about a month now with a week in there moving my family here last week, so I've really only been on the job about three weeks. So have 15 years' experience in the sports commission world, so I'm very excited to be here, already fallen in love with the community. I can tell you, Jacksonville does things right, and you guys know that. Just today, we had the Football Jamboree Media Day at the youth center across the street and, and here in Chambers, and Glenn and Kevin and those guys did an amazing job. So there's a lot of opportunity here, just as you ladies just said. I mean, there's, there's so much to draw from and to build on, and so that's what I'm here to do, is to help grow the sports market and get that 2.6% up and have, have a bigger piece of that pie. But excited to be here, you know, be happy to touch on anything that you guys wish or, or answer any questions, but thank you again for your hospitality. I had some great Stromboli yesterday at a place that you like. No, and it was fantastic. Anything that you'd like me to touch on or?
No, thank you. We appreciate your being here. Now, Scott didn't prepare these numbers, these are from FY15, but to look at what's has been spent in sport in this community, we've had a return on investment of nearly $124 for every dollar spent. That's those overnight stays, that's what people spend, that's the stuff that's tracked. These aren't any inflationary numbers or multipliers or anything like that. This uses a national way of calculating what the value is of overnight and it's straightforward stuff there. Those 3,200 room nights that we talked about earlier, that 2.6%, but those are just ones they generated from the Sports Commission as it is by itself. And so about $2 million worth of otherwise economic impact, when you count what people spent on gas and travel using some of the national formulas that are out there, that's what that number works out to as it was. That's sports, we know sports is good. And I want to give one other example, it's already been mentioned, about the Marine Corps Half Marathon. Here is something that was a, we didn't know what a jewel that it was out there that happened. In 2012, 2, 300 runners, the MCCS could not advertise this and was not advertising it off the base, they couldn't do anything. Last year, they had 1,300 runners, and here documented 1,200 room nights. 1,200 room nights. This is an amazing thing, and of course, this is just one, but of a series of races they operate that's part of the Grand Prix Series. But this one, this one is a crown jewel, the only half marathon run entirely aboard a military installation, and having that Marine place that medal around your neck is a powerful, powerful thing. Now, I told you before about these key components, and I'm going to run through a couple of areas quickly as to what it is that we've been doing on them. Reunions was, as I said, a duh moment. We all know the success of some people in the past on some city-owned property that Mr. Bittner has been a part of, that has made his living off of what the reunion business was. He had 43 rooms in a space that was not much bigger than this room, and he held reunions that were small and, and size was there. But we're now in a partnership with the Chamber where, and we're actually leaving to go see Columbus, Georgia, which is the number one place for military-related reunions, and we're going there next week to hear from them how they do it. And we're going to hopefully imbibe this experience into a corporate fabric of what happens at the Chamber so we can build on that with other, other types of reunions that we can not yet capitalized on in an organized fashion that it is. The Sports Commission's been challenged to come up with two to three sporting events each year that generate 100 room nights, a three-year commitment we've, that the authority has given to them. And of course, one of these events has to be water-based so that it comes out, and that was influenced by our city manager there to make sure that that gets happening. It's the experience people have when they come here, how they feel, how they are at events, how they're received. And so we're working with the volunteer Onslow to have a docent program where people will be there welcoming, where they're going to actually be part of some of these events to make sure you have a good experience and know that. And this is a three-year commitment. This will start our tour, our tour project. And that tour project, as we mentioned, we want those, those tours that are talking about the Lejeune Memorial Gardens, we're going to use docents to do this, we're going to work with some signage in the future and mobile apps, and it's going to be a starter project for us for hopefully some other things that would include the on-base tours. And of course, it follows on those memorials tours. So the strategic work we want to leave you with is this, we're working toward a media plan development that the authority will receive at their next meeting. It is this huge spreadsheet of how we'll take care of the money and they'll tell us where they, how they want us to do this. And of course, we're continuing with that main goal of overnight stay generation. We are sharing with others and working with them, and we're doing a lot of cross-promotion when it benefits those facilities as it was. We have a great team that has been put together. Your city media staff has been, learned a lot about travel and tourism and how to promote that as it was, and all of these are maintaining some platforms for us. We're also doing the staffing for the fam tours, and again, I don't want to underemphasize the collaboration that we have with the county effort and the leadership effort that Lorette Legan has put together. Many of you know that when we began, we started with the Tourism Promotion Fund, those activities and festivals. And we told you about how some of those problems were out there from that as it was, that you can't necessarily see them grow quickly. But we put together this tourism panel that has actually done some prescriptive methods to them about what can be done, and that's what they spoke of, they're going to go visit with Oktoberfest. You're going to see a different Oktoberfest in the future than what you have seen in the past. And so these conditions are helping to advance these festivals. Many of them are emphasizing the experiences that you can have by attending our events and our festivals as it is there. And in one of them was about enhancing the experience and for the visitor. This is the Hero Mile. We rolled this out last September. The idea was simple, to recognize those people that had passed in the War on Terror since 9/11 and to have their pictures and their memory there. In this picture- In this picture is a fellow who worked with the Raleigh EMS. We learned this from his Facebook page, as to what he posted about his emotional appearance of this mile and the last few miles of this race, that he saw someone he knew. We didn't know we were going to capture him saluting this as he went by, but it was one of those immediate connections, and credit to Lisa Miller for having done that, by the way. But it was one of those unique moments that had an emotional connection to that event. People in their surveys said they're coming back because of this and because of what this type of connection means. That's military, that's using the resources that we have, and that's expanding events so that we can create those overnight stays as it is too. There are some things on the horizon. Among them, obviously, is the story about the Monford Point. And as you talked about, we're going to be there for the gold medal ceremony, and soon after that ceremony, we're going to launch a campaign that's going to help find others who haven't yet received the recognition that their families are eligible to receive for the service that they had during that time. And they're having a number of events that we're advancing for them on that behalf. The other one, the visitors' center, that's going to add another dynamic to what's going to happen in our community and how we recognize and welcome to people that are traveling. And obviously, this evening, you approved the construction of the Sturgeon City Environmental Education Center. That provides both a venue and a platform. A venue for having people to have other events, a platform for Sturgeon City to engage in activities that will draw overnight stays and to do things within their programming that will have that. We do have an issue in this community with space. We mentioned about some of these activities. They cannot expand the number of people that they invite to these activities because there's simply not enough space in the venues that they have available to them. Now, some space is coming online, and that will add another 100 or so, but after that, what's going to happen? Where are they going to go? And so that issue continues on. And that's the theme that the Mayor Pro Tem will now end on, is talking about the issue of space and the issue of space for sports. Mr. Chairman, thank you for letting us present on your behalf.
Thank you all for a wonderful presentation. I know that there's a tremendous amount of information, but I can say that in the, I think it's seven years that we've been active.
Yes, sir.
Fifty-something meetings. I can truly say that we're on the right path. And, you know, I learned a long time ago, you surround yourself with the very best people and you can't help but be successful. And I think that's where we are today. We have professionals that know what they're doing in their line of work, and they've been successful in helping us. And so as part of that is the facilities issue that we'll talk about very briefly. We kept hearing over the meetings and presentations from the Chamber, the sports commission, economic development, you know, sports is a billion-dollar industry, and we do a great job here in Onslow County, and we have great athletes. And we have a tremendous amount of outdoor real estate in terms of fields, soccer fields, baseball fields. The city has tremendous assets out there, but where we lack is indoor facilities. Who would have ever thought that the Commons would be just such a small place when it got built many, many years ago with the controversy that it had? And now, you can't even book it, you know? So again, space is an issue, and that's why we invested after hearing from the sports commission director year after year that, hey, you know, we're limited with space, these are activities that we're losing, you know? Volleyball is huge, cheerleading is huge, and I can go on and on. Indoor activities that we did, the basketball, it continued to grow, but we had to limit teams because of space. The schools in the past were able to allow sports people to rent out their gyms, but now they're not doing that as much anymore. And because of security and other reasons, those spaces are not available for indoor use like they were 10 years ago. So there's a lot of activities that we're missing out on because we don't have the indoor facilities as we're being told. And so we invested in a study, because obviously, one of the things that you want to know is, you know, talk is great, but data has to support it. So we signed on with the folks at SFA and SFM, which is a huge advisory group, the Sports Facility Advisory Group, and they conducted a study, which I think we've shared with you before. As part of this, the county and the sports commission, some of the county leaders and the sports commission had had some off-the-record dialogue that something like this in the community is needed, and there may be a great opportunity for partnership. So we invested together in doing this sports advisory report, which came back and said, here's what you can support, here's the type of building you can support, this is how much we think it'll cost to build it, this is how much we think it'll cost to run it. Long story short, that was well and good, and we were excited about that, but at that point in time, we were not able to leverage our part of that funding should we move forward with a facility like that. But now with the flip and the change, as we call it, we have more capital expenditure availability to move forward in something like this. So again, this is something that we are going to put back on the table and start having some conversations on and see if there's an opportunity to potentially move forward with a facility. We don't know where the location needs to be, we don't know exactly what the sort of building. Now that we can meet our portion of potential leveraging, we can have some real conversation. So I guess what I'd like to tell you guys today is that your TDA has really been working extremely hard and has been very successful and has done it on a low, what we would call a low budget, because most of the work is done from our staff. We don't have an employee, we don't pay an employee, we have staff members, and that's your team, other than the contracted services that we have. And you could see today, we are very strategic and targeted, and we continue to work on that each and every day. Years ago, when I was in the car business, you get a full-page ad in the newspaper and you can sell some cars. As you can see today from the report, it's much different today. You really got to know what you're doing to target and market. So we're learning as we grow. So I hope today was a good presentation. There'll be more to come, and we obviously want to keep you informed. And at any time, if there's any questions or any concerns or anything that we need to know, please don't hesitate to reach out. There's two of us that sit on the board, and we're here to serve you as well. Any questions?
A question. Listening, it was truly an impressive presentation, particularly the regional, national stories that helped create and publicize Jacksonville as a place to visit and so on. If I were to visit Jacksonville.com, would that be a gathering spot where I could find reference to all these articles or any events that are going on?
We just started a press room, and, you know, I need to look and see exactly where we are, but in the press room area on the website, you can see some of those articles. And then I'll let you address the event.
I'm thinking about if something new comes out and I visit Jacksonville.com and I could go to that site, or when something new happened in some regional news, I could be aware of that, and I could send it to my kids and college buddies and so on, and create some interest in Jacksonville. But a lot of this stuff that I learned tonight was for the first time, and a lot of it's interesting, and I'm sure it would create a lot of interest in people wanting to come to Jacksonville.
We agree. We do put some of that out on the Facebook also, and we are working toward the end on, particularly so the website has those newsroom items as Susan just mentioned.
I'm one of the few, I guess, that don't follow Facebook.
Okay, got it.
You can still go to the website and see a lot.
Yes.
And one, can I make one quick point? And I think it's important for us to know that the festivals that we support or we are involved with, we are very adamant about those things being operated correctly and being marketed correctly. So we're not just dishing out dollars on some event. We have professionals that check out everything they do and make sure that it's done right, and then we have follow-ups, that they have to meet certain criterias for future funding. We are very strict on that, and I think that has led to some successes. So, Mayor?
Absolutely. Thank you very much, everybody that participated in the presentation tonight. That was very enlightening. It was a very thorough report, and again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor, before we begin the next item, could we take a 10-minute break?
Absolutely. Just a second.
I'll give you some time, let's think about it. Richard, this will be a test of you, how to segue from this presentation into so.
If we get this extra visit...
Okay, we're back in session and we'll go now to the second item number 11 on your agenda. And Dr. Woodruff, I'll turn it over to you.
Mayor members of council, tonight we'd also like to give you an update on the land application site report. Your agenda calls it Blue Frog, but that's only going to be portion of the report that's going to be given tonight. Pete Dever and William Brown are going to be the people who will make this presentation. As you know, Pete has been with us for, what, eight years now?
Yes, sir, eight years this month.
And he covers all of our water sewer lines maintenance activities. William Brown has been with us how many years?
Twenty-six and a half.
Twenty-six and a half years. He came right out of junior high school and started working for the city. But William has a special background that has helped us at the land treatment site. William comes from a forestry background. And as you know, we are not just a wastewater treatment facility, we're also a forestry management facility. So we have really benefited from his dual knowledge. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Pete and William. Please feel free to ask questions as we go through this. Gentlemen?
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Mayor -- oh, there we go. Sorry. Good evening, Mayor Council. William is going to take the first part of this presentation, and then I will be taking the second part. So as we proceed, if you have any questions, you know, obviously just speak up, or if you want to wait, or whatever, just ask us. We'll be more than happy to answer them, and if we can't, we'll be more than happy to get you an answer.
Now, the advanced button is on the right. There we go.
All right, bubba.
Mr. Bittner laid down a little bit of a challenge at the end of the last session, and I'm going to try to step up to that. Mr. Bittner, I was born about two blocks from here at the old Onslow Memorial Hospital, and I'm very familiar with the Wilson Bay Park and Wilson Bay in general, and the construction of the old wastewater treatment facility which is now starting to see. So I'm also very proud to be part of the fix for Wilson Bay, which is our land treatment facility and land application. I think we're doing it the way God intended and that Mother Nature intended. With those things said, we have about a 22-year-old facility now. And we inherited some issues a few years ago, you know, things that is -- the whole process has been a learning curve for the city of Jacksonville, and there's some things we've learned that we do right, some things that we've learned that we weren't necessarily doing right and/or not addressing properly, which was the maintenance and upkeep of our forest, which is our money crop, and the final treatment for our wastewater as it leaves the city of Jacksonville. A reminder, our final treatment is land application. So we have a 7,500-acre facility, and within that 7,500 acres is our spray irrigation facility, which equals about 2,400 acres of the 7,500 acres. We have a little over 21,000 sprinklers, 300 miles of pipes ranging from inch and a half up to 36-inch main. We have an average effluent of about 5.8 million gallons a day. We have implemented a forestry management program, and at present, we are maintaining about 95 miles or mowing and clearing 95 miles of lateral per season, which equals about one-third of the facility per year. We have many challenges within the land treatment facility, you know, operations and maintenance, given the size of the facility, manpower shortages, equipment issues, everything is ongoing, everything is cyclic, weather, and may I repeat, weather, and may I repeat, weather, cold weather, hot weather, weather, rain. To date, we've had over 45 inches of rain since January. That's over the total land application site, 45 inches of rain. We've implemented a forestry management program to improve the health of the forest. Standing water is an issue, wastewater effluent pH is an issue, and sludge removal in a timely manner has been an issue. So, you know, what are the answers? What are the things that we've done to try to improve these situations? Daylighting and pod rehabilitation. You see in these two slides, some results, some of the equipment that we're now using with council approval and replacement, and council allowing us to hang on to some older equipment, which has increased our ability to mow and maintain laterals even when a piece goes out for service or is down by having these spares sitting. We can keep rolling in the clearing and the pod rehab efforts as land application needs and desires. We've implemented additional tree clearing, removal of dead trees, diseased trees, and that, you know, trees of choice, so to speak, those types of efforts. Subsoiling, which is breaking the hard pan in the soil. We purchased implements and living within our O and M budget to do so. Subsolar, we have purchased tiller attachments for our rolling stock rubber tire tractors, additional fecon, a couple of daycoes, and we have purchased a shearhead that we can actually drive that is attachment for the equipment you're seeing here, that we can drive in and take down the dead trees and fill them into the buffer zones where nature just takes its course and they rot out. We have initiated partnerships with North Carolina State University. One is our tree plots. The lower picture is a photo of one of our tree plots, which is actually on the left-hand side. That is a lateral you're looking at, which is actually being mowed with a rubber tired tractor and bush hogs, which a few years ago, we were not able to do because of the condition of the laterals and the amount of overgrowth and/or dead trees that were felt fallen and fell and rotting inside of the laterals. The last time that was mowed, it was mowed with a rubber tire tractor and bush hog. We have also endeavored with North Carolina State University, we have received a grant, which is we're doing a water quality study and to see if some of our wastewater can be reused in farms and agriculture instances and other reuse projects. We've, in the last three years, we have gone through many special projects and things to bring a 20-year-old facility back up to its now. One of the things that Pete and I talked about very much early on, the fact that we have a 20-year-old facility but doesn't have to look and act like a 20-year-old facility. So again, living in, within the means of our budget and being very methodical about what we set out to do, we have removed two of the, the two traveling bridges, they've been sent out for sandblasting, new pumps have been installed, the control and computer logic inside of the cabinets has been replaced, and it's all, again, been done within the confines of the city budget. We haven't been back to request any additional funding or anything like that. We have, out of 144 valves inside of the city land treatment facility, we have replaced -- give me a number, Pete.
Probably close to 15 or 20.
Fifteen or 20 valves that we use to manipulate the direction of flow throughout the pods and the zones of the LTS facility. We have a step screen, an additional step screen being installed, which everybody here's been at the land treatment site, which is replacing the old bar screen, which from day one was not nearly as efficient at removable our suspended solids as our existing Huber step screen. The old bar screen has since been removed in the last six months, actually May 17th to be exact. And we're awaiting the arrival of our new Huber step screen, which will allow us dual capacity, meaning that both trains will be open at all times. Where in the past, we've had one train closed off simply because the old bar screen was out of service. Tilling, cultivating, lateral clearing and cutting, selective of dead tree removal have all been goals, things that we have been, we have accomplished with existing staff. The LTS facility is operated with 15 total staff along with two lab personnel, a total of 18, counting myself. We've implemented a forestry management program, and to date, there's been 1,372 acres thin, 450 acres clear cut, 120 acres of prescribed burns, 830 mid-rotation herbicide, and 450 acres of regeneration or replanting.
Could you go back to that slide just a minute? I would like to take just a moment to dwell on that. You will remember seven years ago, when you visited the facility, 1,300 acres thin, 450 acres cleared, 120 acres prescribed burned. That's a number in 120 acres that really we had hoped to be higher. But rain, you mentioned, you heard what they said a minute ago. How many inches so far this year?
In excess of 45 inches.
Haven't had a controlled burn this year. It's a function of the weather. But, you know, you charged the staff to go out there and manage the forest. Right there are the results. These two people and their counterparts have taken that seriously. If it ever does dry up enough, we would welcome the opportunity to give you an onsite tour. Because I'm going to tell you, what you're going to see out there today is not what you saw seven years ago. And I have to commend Pete and William and their staff, they have made that difference. Mr. Bittner, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm sort of dwelling on that. I don't know how many years it was, maybe it was seven years. We had the team of experts come in talking about the dead trees, the problem with the lagoons, up the capacity, and all kinds of problems and setting out certain goals. How do we stand in terms of implementing all the recommendations that was a part of that study?
We appreciate your lead-in to the rest of the presentation, and I'm glad that you got the email that I asked you to -- but really--
I'm your shield, go ahead.
That is the purpose of the rest of the presentation, is to show you how we are implementing what the professional team that you brought in, the team of experts. So please.
You're referring to the StandTech report, and it was implemented and built to the city of Jacksonville in 2011. And everything that has been implemented was suggested by the StandTech report and that committee. And some things the city has not been able to afford along the way, some things were not practical, but everything that has been practical and attainable, those are the goals that we're after. Forestry management and the life of the forest is the definition of the success of our land We have 20 to 25 acres of test plots of various types of trees planted, and those trees are there not only for the city of Jacksonville's learning ability and to see what will fit our facility. That is part of North Carolina State University's program, that these, these studies may provide information to other industries and organizations within the state, that they may be able to transplant or use this information in other areas of the state of North Carolina. Green ash, eucalyptus, cypress, oak, white oak, sycamore, I mean, like I said, we've probably got two different varieties, two dozen varieties out there. USDA grant to evaluate agricultural benefits of our land application site, and basically what we're doing is trying to figure out, number one, the quality of our wastewater as it is irrigated, the effect that we're having on the environment, what ways, what things can we implement to further improve the quality, and what the reuse benefits may be of our water. There may be other ways to use what's in our lagoon versus land applying, agricultural purposes, gray water uses and those such initiatives that, so we may be able to reclaim it and filter it and actually turn it back into our drinking water system. Who knows what the future holds? With that said, we will move into the Blue Frog presentation, which is another one of the obstacles mentioned in our StandTech report. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Pete Dever.
Thank you, William. Prior to the FY16-17 budget, the reoccurring issue was sludge removal, mechanical dredging sludge at the lagoons. And in our operation and maintenance manual for the wastewater plant, it states that every three to five years, we need to do dredging. It is part of the, as it processes through the aeration, it is part of the treatment process, and obviously, the more sludge you have in there, the less treatment we're going to get. So one of the challenges that we had was funding the sludge removal. And prior to the budget, we, Wally, Mr. Anderson, and everybody in the division heads, when we were doing our budget preliminaries, Wally challenged me with trying to find a alternative way. So did some little sleuthing and got with William, and we got together, and we found this, this program is called Blue Frog, but it's by absolute aeration is the name of the company that provides them. So we came to council, and we asked if we could start a pilot program that took effect July, June the 9th of 2016 was the official startup date. So with that, we set some parameters that we brought to council and got the approval. We also got Department of Environment, environmental quality approval, because it's, it's an alternate of aeration, it doesn't change that we're aerating the water, but it is a change through our permit. So to stay transparent with the state, Mr. McShaw wrote a letter to them seeking approval, and they granted the approval. And part of the agreement, as, when we went through with the negotiations with the company, was how are we going to measure the depth of the sludge? Well, there were two ways. Let me back up. Prior to this, in this process, we had a third party outside affiliate from the city, separate from the city, came out and measured the sludge in all six of the lagoons that you see on the board there. And with that, with those measurements, we estimated that there was about 12 million gallons of sludge in those lagoons. They used a technique that's, that's called a sludge judge. And it's basically, you take this, this clear stuff and you stick it down, it has a little check valve, so it's, it blocks everything off, you pull it back up, and you can measure the amount. And that was the technique that they used. And we averaged about 24 and a half and five feet pretty much across the board. So then, that's, that's where we came up with the 12 million, 12 million gallon calculation and, and the cost for all that. And as, as we proceeded, we found this program, we brought it in, council gave us sole source approval, state gave us approval. sole source approval, state gave us approval, and we implemented it on July, June the 9th was the official day. We measured the sludge, I think the first couple of weeks, we measured it weekly, daily, almost kept, kept a watch on it. And our primary focus was, how can we, how, how fast is this going to reduce the sludge for us? And that was our primary focus. And, and we got, as we went through, we saw some results. These blue dots that you see represent the Blue Frog aerators. There's 14 of them. The first cluster up top is, would be the end that is closest to the headworks where once it leaves the 10, the 50 horsepower aeration where the, where the, uh, first part of the treatment process begins, you have those nine, cluster of nine there. Um, and then the, the green line is a three-foot baffle that just, that is there, that kind of suspends the water. So, it'll sit there and churn itself up. And then it, after it did that, it would go through the full depth curtain that was there originally and come into the second cluster of five. And then there was another three-foot, uh, three-foot depth curtain there to keep that water. So, it would sit there and just churn itself. And what it did, as it did this, it made the sludge become active and it literally ate itself. It dissolved itself in place, all the organic sludge. And then it would serpentine through, come back around and go back out. And once it left there where the blue arrow is, it would go into the storage lagoons until we were able to irrigate it out. The initial investment council approved was, in the C I P, was $290,000. That included purchasing the Blue Frogs and all of the electrical upgrades that we had to do for those 14. In our negotiations with Absolute Aeration, we set a target of 23%. I will tell you upfront, we didn't meet that target. We were close, but we did not get there. But we'll, we'll go into that in a little bit. Our findings is, across the board, using the, our staff used what's called a weighted disc, which is basically a weight on the end of a shaft. You lower it down till the sludge meets, till it meets resistance and it stops. It's basically a story stick and it gives you the depth of free water from the surface elevation to the sludge. That was the method that was used in the agreement, the weighted disc. And remind you, the third party that came in, they were using the sludge judge. But when it came time, at the very end, when we started putting all this together, we found out that the weighted disc and the sludge judge were not that far apart. We reached about 17% reduction. One of the other things that we did notice is we had a slight reduction in electrical cost. These are three horsepower motors, whereas we had 10 horsepower motors and they were 20-plus years old. So, we had newer, newer equipment, smaller footprint. It helped us out. And mind you, our, going back, our primary focus was to try to reduce the sludge. Well, in the process during this year, we found some unexpected benefits that helped us out. One, they're easier to maintain. The yearly maintenance on these is $25 per unit. And that's basically just changing the oil out once a year. We did find out that it also gave us a lower pH in our wastewater. And we all know part of Mr. Bittner's question with the panel of experts is, we needed to lower the pH. The pine trees like the pH around 7.2. This helped us get to that point. The, the B O D, the biological oxygen demand-
Thank you.
Uh, we found out that it improved. But the other, what we also found out is, now mind you, lagoons one and three were the old aeration units. What we found is, with these new units, we were getting as good, if not better, sample results with these units. So, it is an added bonus to us.
Getting what kind of results?
We were getting better.
Of what?
Better, uh, pH, total suspended solids, B O Ds, water clarity. They did a sample, Chip Beddell, the owner of the company, actually came down and he pulled a water sample with about seven feet in depth. And literally, the water was, wasn't crystal clear, but it was clear enough you could see through it. There was no, I mean, so the water clarity was greatly improved as well. Uh, and again, our, uh, our goal was 23%. We, we didn't quite meet it. It was, it was aggressive, but we did get 17%. So, with that, um, that is pretty much bringing you up to speed to where we're at. I'm, I'm getting ready to present, uh, three options to council for your, for your discussion and decision. Is there any questions up to this point?
You can't get rid of all the sludge.
We will not. There is inorganic sludge that will not dissolve.
You have to physically remove that.
Correct. At, at a period of time, um, which a little bit later on in the, um, which I know one of the things I tried to prepare for is, if, if someone asks a question, what's our return on the investment?
I was just going to say that, yes.
Yes, sir. I have those numbers when we get.
I'm just curious, you know, three to five is what, what you're told to expect or prepare for now? Now, what do you think you're going to be? For dredging?
Provided, if we were to move forward with phase two, which is add them to lagoons one and three, we could push this out 20 years. And I did a, a real, I mean, I can go into it now, but I did a quick cost analysis. In 2015, the cost estimate to remove the sludge in lagoons one, two, and three, which are the, um, the 10 horsepower, would be $550,000 in 2015. If, when, uh, council, when we're done with this presentation and council approves, we will spend roughly $894,000 total, one time, which would give us a savings of just under a half a million dollars over a 20-year period. But we feel like we can push this can out at least 15 years, if not more. Now, we won't, as Mr. Bittner said, we'll never get rid of all the sludge. But what'd be left would be like sand and the type of grit that just doesn't dissolve us, it can't, it can't do nothing. So, we would have to drain it down and do that probably, you know, 15 to 20-year period.
With, with, uh, I know there's some environmental concerns when you take the sludge and you haul it off, you can only take it certain places.
And we can only do it certain places and it has to be done a certain time of the year, and that is pre-crop planting seasons.
And I was wondering if, you know, if you have got it better to where it's cleaner, you know, cleaner by-
Mm-hmm.
Then, I wonder if that opens up possibilities where you could take it or are you still going to be restricted?
Um, it would take some sampling and testing to see what's actually in it when we're done. You know, utopia world, we could take it out, put it in a drying bed, let it dry out and carry it to the landfill and they could use it for cover. That's to be determined.
Okay.
But yeah, we are improving it to the point now where, excuse me, we would have to do another sample, send it off and then say, okay, here's what we got. Can you do it, you know, under your special permit or can we just drain it, take it offline? And mind you, this is done during, you know, January, February, March, which is our worst time because our lagoons are usually the fullest because we can't irrigate as much, you know, based on our permit. So, did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Before Pete leaves that-
Sir.
Uh, the cost of buying these was $290,000. What it doesn't show is the savings that Pete and William and their staff did. They're the ones who actually did all the electrical work out there. They did all of the cable rigging, if I can use that term, that's necessary to hold these in place. They set the anchors on the shores. So, you know, when you look at a $290,000 investment, you should also recognize, and pick any number you want, you know, 20, 30, $40,000 of savings, because we have a staff that has the ability to do a lot of this themselves. And I don't want this presentation to move forward without recognizing the fact that that level of staff is what you pay for and you're getting a great benefit from the training and the leadership that these two gentlemen give. So-
Thank you.
Please.
I would add to the word dedication.
Absolutely.
You guys really live that project and-
Thank you.
I can tell how you really want to make it better and better.
And, and part of the, the number I threw out for the, for the return on the investment, the, the half a million dollars over 20 years does not factor in any of the staff labor to, uh, you know, we have to take a lagoon offline, valve it off and then make, make arrangements to get the other flows into the other lagoon. So, that was not calculated in. I only used a number that I knew was solid, which was that 2015 number. And then what I knew we had for the cost estimate for phase one and then the cost estimate for phase two and did the comparison that way. Okay. Um, option number one, there is a clause in our performance guarantee with Absolute Aeration Consolidated Pipe that if we did not, if it did not meet the performance as it was specified, which is the 23%, we could consider pulling these Blue Frogs out and returning them and getting back up to 20%, 75% of our money minus the engineering fees. But we would have to put back the old aerators, which are 20-plus years old, and I would have to spend about $75,000 to $100,000 fixing the electrical upgrade because they wouldn't, they wouldn't be compatible anymore. The maintenance on the old areas is more, plus we wouldn't get the water quality benefits that we've been seeing, and we would still have to do mechanical dredging. So, option number one is out there based on the performance guarantee. And again, I will reiterate, we did not hit that 23%. We got 17%. But we, we were close, but we didn't get there. Option two is to extend the current pilot program, uh, give us longer monitoring periods, evaluate sludge measurements, still receive treatment benefits in train two, but we lose the warm weather benefits for trains one and three, and you still have that water quality that's mixing. Um, it's not that much difference, but there is a difference in the water quality.
One of the, the warm water benefit, what the test learned, uh, taught us, is that when the water's warm this time of the year, you really get active decomposition of the sludge.
Right.
It's, and when you get into the cold weather, you're really almost stabilized. And so, you know, if we're going to go forward, you know, we should take advantage of the warm weather. That's, that's one of the key points.
What they were really saying too is this, critters eat more in warm water than they do in cold water.
I have a question.
Sir.
What is Blue Frog? Have they give you any indication as to why you only got 17% versus 23%? Is there any recommendation?
There, there was much debate about that. One of the things that come up in question was, um, how did we even come about that number? And we were all kind of scratching our heads. I feel like it's an average reduction that they've seen across the country when they've done this. I think they said that was a number that they would, will come to with because that's an average of what they've seen in their other systems. One of the, two other things that play into this, this is the first system they've done of our size. And one of the other things is, we have the full-depth baffles. They're not, they've never done it with a full-depth baffle lagoon before. So, I think those two things could have played into it. I'm not making excuses. We missed the target, period.
But is it that we missed the target or they gave you an indication that was incorrect?
I, I think it's more, I think it's a combination.
Okay.
We were-
I didn't know if there's any strategies that they could recommend that may help us obtain a higher number or they're just, that's not their-
Yes, sir. That was the next thing I was going to bring up. There is, there is a, another factor that played into this and we actually learned something else. Hurricane Matthew came back through October, I think it was October 7th. It came through. It took us 90 days. We could see through the sampling and the, and the water quality and the testing. It took us 90 days for the lagoons to recover.
Oh, okay.
Um, so that definitely upset the system. Because we had, we had-
That could have had an impact.
Do we, do you remember what the max flow was? That was when we hit 15, 11?
That was not our maximum flow. I don't remember what it was for Matthew. I know we reached our, during the year, I think it was January's ring event. Like in January.
So, this is the largest system they've experimented with.
Correct.
Correct.
We are the largest in the country that they've ever tried this with.
Or we're the largest in the country, period.
Yes, sir. Second largest, I think we're second largest on the East Coast right now, is that right?
That's what I heard.
Second largest on the East Coast, so it's, um, but all, all of those could have played into it as well. I feel like, um, they, going back to this, um, the warm weather, if, the, the number they used was 16 degrees Celsius, which I just found a little ago, 60.8 degrees Fahrenheit. When the water temperature drops below 16 degrees Celsius, the, the activity slows drastically. And you can see on the, on the charts, when we hit that 16 degrees Celsius, you can see the act, the activity of the sludge start to digest more and you can see those numbers start to increase. So, that is option number two. Um, option number three would be to move forward with the C I P, C I P project phase two, which is add the, the Blue Frogs to lagoons one and three. Um, it would be the same number, 14, 14 aerators in each. Um, because it would help us with our sludge reduction, it would improve our treatment process, power savings. I, I, if I remember correctly, when I did my return investment, it was like almost $46,000 across the year we would save in kilowatt, roughly. Uh, we're able to take advantage of, we're still, still going to hop probably through November, usually here. We're upgrading or replacing our 20-year-old aeration system. Um, and there are, in the phase two, there are what units that are called Gold Frogs. Um, and basically what it is, it's a larger unit. There would be three of those installed around the pumping chamber of the effluent pump station that the West Lagoon uses. Three inlets, we'd put one at each inlet. That would also help lower the pH at, before it hits the irrigation fields, dropping it down in that seven, 7.2 range is what we're looking for. And it would also, in the long run, they were saying would help, um, break down the little clumps of algae, so we wouldn't maybe see as many nozzles clogging, um, which is something that William's staff does every day, go out, clear nozzles when they're spraying as much as they can. Um, so it would help with that also. Uh, but our key focus, like I said, when we found these added benefits was reducing the pH, the B O Ds, the total suspended solids. That's what we were after. That was a bonus and now we could focus on that as well. So, that is option number three. Uh, land treatment site-
Let me keep going a second.
Okay. Um, our land treatment site recommendations, our daylighting and pottery hab is recommend the staff continue to focus ever so recovering the laterals. Uh, and what we're doing is, we're going from, from tree line to tree line, as high up as we could go with our equipment. It opens it up for the air, for the sun and the wind to help dry it out. It's rough on the equipment to first go through, but you reap the benefits the next year. Right now, William's staff is reaping the benefits from a year and a half to two years ago, where he's saying we could go in and bush haul with a rubber tire machine. Now, we don't have to go in with the track machines and the heavier attachments to break the, now we can do that. So, he can, he could keep somebody doing that while other people are still focusing on the daylighting of the other laterals that were, and tree removal. Uh, forestry management, keep, keep going with forestry management, plan for L T S, including timber harvesting, controlled burns, um, herbicideing, it's, we work on that, but it's, sometimes we've got to be careful where that goes. And the reforestation, which is replanting of trees. Um, so that is a recommendation as well. Uh, partnerships, continued partnership with NC State University and the other agencies that, uh, we feel could benefit or would benefit us. Uh, we've had several other municipalities come and see the Blue Frog program. Uh, they're all very interested in it and they're waiting to see our results. We do share our sample results with them. Um, lagoon-level management, I'll be honest with you, because I, I don't sugarcoat anything, that's basically a shell game. We move from one lagoon to the other until we can spray. And when we can spray, we pump out of the west. Uh, we, we, we valve off to south until it gets, it gets like 13 and a half feet just below freeboard. We'll pump down to west and then we'll move some from the south, put it in the west, and then we'll fill the south back up. It's teacupping it until we can get hot, dry, long days to gain. And, and that's basically what we're doing. I mean, that's, I don't sugarcoat it, that's what it is. Oh, one of the, uh, thank you. One of the recommendations that the panel had was keeping a, a five-foot level in the lagoons. Um, and that was more on the, for the pH, the algae. Algae in the pH. That was one of the things. And we actually did hit the five-foot mark in-
Was it 15?
In October of 15, we actually hit the five-foot level across the board. Unfortunately, we had a, as a, one of the former state reps always said, chronic rainfall. So, and it just filled everything right back up. Um, the Blue Pilot, excuse, Blue Frog Pilot Program, our recommendation to, William and I's recommendation to Wally and in turn to Dr. Woodruff and in turn to city council is, proceed with option three. However, we have to ask city council to accept the 17% of, as fulfillment of the intent of the contract in lieu of the 23% and move forward with the Blue Frogs and the Gold Frog installation. There, we are projected to be under budget in the C I P, um, for as far as the equipment purchase. There is some electrical stuff that we have to buy, but we will be on budget.
Is that a bargaining point? The success of the program, uh, in terms of them being able to advertise that we're using the Blue Frog technology, the Green Frog throughout this thing-
Right.
-to get a concession on a price.
Actually, uh, excuse, uh, you want to take it, you want me to take it?
No, you keep going.
Dr. Woodruff, um, was very adamant when we, we've had several, um, face-to-face meetings with the Blue Frog representatives. And, and what Dr. Woodruff was successful in, and in obtaining was a, let me find my Almost, uh, around a $70,000, uh, I won't say necessarily credit, but a $70,000 discount in lieu of that 6% that we didn't reach, they conceded that originally we were going to get the 28 Blue Frogs and one Gold Frog for, for that price. Now, we're going to get the 28 Gold, 28 Blue Frogs and three Gold Frogs for the original price that we're going to have, and we get a $70,000 discount off of the, the one Gold Frog. So, essentially, we're getting two Gold Frogs at virtually no price.
To correct the record, I, I just suggested that Pete talk to them. Pete, the negotiating, and Pete's the one who came up with the final number that they recommended.
There's, there's no I in team unless you use block letters.
That's right.
It's a, it's a group project. We all worked very hard on it. Dr. Woodruff has been very lenient and generous in giving William and I the, the lead, the leadway to work and negotiate on this, and we do appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
I can honestly say, I, I am comfortable recommending option three to council. I bought into this project. I, I think it's something that we can move forward with and still get results. We're going to continue to monitor the sludge. Now, we're doing it once a month, and then we'll, you know, we can, we can bring back a report in, you know, six months after we do startup or something, and keep council apprised on how we're going. But my recommendation to Wally is option three.
Richard, do you need a motion tonight?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to adopt option three as presented.
Do we need a budget amendment or anything?
No, sir, it's in your...
Any other discussion on this one? What's, what's the total cost?
Total cost for Phase Two, or altogether?
Option three.
Option three is...
Well, Pete, looking at that, one of the reasons we need council to make this, we're holding a letter of credit for that seventy-five percent of the two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, which we need to release if, if this is passed.
It's six hundred and, six hundred and, six hundred and, I think it's six hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, something like. And we have seven hundred and ten thousand dollars in the, in the CIP.
Under the budget.
It's under the budget. But now, the rest of that remaining money was going to be used towards the electrical, that has to be done, but it's going to be done by in-house staff. It's mostly the purchase of it, which electrical stuff is very expensive. But we would be, we would be at budget or under budget.
All your lagoons will be covered.
Sir?
All your lagoons will be covered.
All the, the ten horse would be. The fifty horsepower lagoons are still there. Those are still older aerators, and we have not even begun to look at that, to say if we need to take them out, maybe get another, we could probably put some ten horsepower's in there or something in the future. But right now, our focus is on those three.
The next steps.
And the next steps, yes, sir. And then, I would like to run this out, run this program for a year, see where we're at, and then maybe next year, I could put it in the CIP for, you know, Phase Three would be to replace the fifty horsepower's, or something to that effect.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion?
I was gonna just ask, now, the seventeen percent has been achieved in a certain timeframe.
Twelve months.
And so, was that like a straight line? Did it plateau at seventeen percent? Or do we have any expectation of for three years, you might have additional?
Our expectation is it will continue to digest all of the organic sludge.
But I'm just saying, did your, your data show, did the line, did it steady slope down?
It was, it was a gradual trend until Hurricane Matthew.
Oh, yes.
And then you saw the spikes, and then we started, did the gradual trend down again. But...
So, it wasn't a straight line?
No, it was not.
In one direction anyway?
Let me address that. Remember what we said earlier, the water temperature and the critters, what you will find in, in all the charts that, and we actually had Parker and Associates do the independent bathometric work, and we're going to continue to have them do that. But what you'll find is, the colder the water, the sludge builds up. The warmer the water, the sludge builds down. So, what you, what you don't see is, pick a number, five foot here, and today it's here, and it just went down like that. What the charts very clearly show is, because you remember, we're not dealing with static. You've got sludge in, or let me say it different. You've got sludge present.
You're starting so much and you're adding.
And you've got sludge coming in all the time. So, you're not just addressing the five feet or whatever it was that was in there. You gotta address the five feet that's in there, plus all the new stuff that keeps coming in.
Yep.
So, that's why, you know, if you look again, it's more like a bell curve. The colder the weather, it goes up. The warmer the weather, it goes down. But what we have seen in warm weather days since, let's say, middle of, of May, when it started to warm up, we have seen that coming down. We will tell you, come October, it's gonna start going back up.
Mr. Bittner, just to forgive you some numbers, sir. The, the total cost for Phase One and Phase Two is going to be nine hundred sixty-nine thousand five hundred. Phase One was two hundred and seventy, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So, you're looking six hundred and seventy thousand five hundred dollars for Phase Two that covers Lagoons One and Three and the electrical cost. Well, that would, you know, plus the electrical cost.
Well, that's a lot of money, but it sounds like the return on investment is going to be very, very attractive.
If, if my numbers, if we kick it, if we can delay this for the twenty years, it's about five hundred thousand dollars over twenty years, and that would include about a forty-six thousand dollar savings in electrical, electrical bills. It's over ten thousand kilowatts per hour, excuse me, per year.
I would contend that your best savings is going to be the fact that you've lowered the pH. Therefore, you're actually enhancing the, the capacity of the, of the land to, to take up the, all that water. That is, and, and, and can, the trees continue to grow, you know, instead of killing and having to worry about what are we doing with our forest?
Yes, sir.
That, that's going to be your greatest benefit, I think.
As we stated, we, we stumbled across that by accident. That wasn't our primary focus. We were focused, or my focus was on the sludge.
Sludge, sludge is...
We found the pH by accident.
That's something you're going to be able to measure. The, the health of the forest is something that's going to be a little tougher to measure, but more important perhaps.
Agreed.
Other discussion? All those in favor, the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, appreciate it.
I have a question before you leave.
Sir.
Dr. Woodruff, if I may, it would be nice at some point in time if, if we can get a report on our, on our system, in terms of capacities, what we're reaching, what we're using. You talk a lot about rain and, and filling up and capacities being reached. You know, years ago, we were told that we had up to a nine MGD facility, or it could be expanded to nine MGD. It, it would be a good update to kind of know what our system looks like today. We've had changes in our ETJ and our ability to expand. It, it would be, I think, a good report to know kind of what our facility looks like at a ten thousand foot view.
We can certainly do that, and we'll expand that report, not only to talk about the LTS, but also your entire collection system.
We haven't had that sort of strategic talk in, in a long time, and it would be good to be brought up to date on what that looks like.
We'll work with the staff. Most likely, this is going to be maybe late September, early October, when we can get that to you. And the only reason why is because when you look ahead at the workshops and council sessions that we have for, you know, for the rest of August, the mayor, I think you wanted to mention, so I'll go ahead and mention for you, September the fifth, we're recommending a joint city-county meeting again, to the two of you. Mr. Thomas and Ms. Lozera have been working with the task force on mental health and substance abuse. We want to bring a joint task force report back to the, the county commission and City Council on September the fifth. So, probably October, we can have that information for you.
Thank you.
Mayor, what we'd also like to do this evening is take just a minute to talk about what we have agreed to add to every one of our sessions, and that is our, our One City moment. So, Glenn, if you would please run the One City moment.[1085.69]
Estimates on the numbers yet?
Well, if you talk to the chief for budgeting purposes, he says there's 15,000 people. I have no numbers other than the chief's, and he'll be talking with you, I'm sure, at budget time about this event. You know, truly, the One City campaign is about how we treat each other civilly, how we treat each other with respect. National Night Out is probably one great example of how this community can come together as one in an event, and everybody have a good time and, and benefit from it. So I commend the police department, I commend every department of the city. The National Night Out is truly a citywide event. Kerry had the sanitation crews out there. Michael had beautifully landscaped the park with his folks. Johnny Stilner had swept the streets before and after. It just goes on, police, fire. Even Gail had her folks out there just directing traffic and giving information. Lily had the, the community engagement department. Everybody was out there. The other thing that you have to admire is by 11:30 that night, it was as if the event had never happened. That's how quickly your crews were in there cleaning everything back up. Mr. Willingham knows what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I fell asleep in the backyard, and within two hours, when I woke up, just like you said, they got in there with such precision, it was like science, the way they methodically, and even the vendors, how well they broke down things and got their things out of the park. It was great.
One comment I would also like to add is First Baptist Church took a segment of Willingham Park and completely ran a free playground and set it up from pillar to post. Now, that's what One City is all about. It's where everybody picks up their part of the puzzle and gets it done, and they are really to be commended for what they did there.
I'd like to make comment. I think that we were received very well as far as our One City campaign. I had several members of our committee there that we, you know, walked the entire area. Got a lot of positive feedback from the people that were in attendance at National Night Out. I felt really good about it. And when I went over there to the, to the booth where we had set up, I, I noticed that the two boards, signature boards were full. You couldn't even hardly find a place for anybody to sign. That was good. That was, that was very heartwarming to, to see that kind of reception as far as our, our campaign is concerned.
We also have a license tag, One City, like this One City license tag, that we're going to make available to each of you all. Those will be in your baskets if you'd like to pick them up, so. Mayor, that concludes the items that we had. I know that you had discussed a closed session, so you can determine at this point who you would like to stay and if you want to go into closed session.
Okay, to entertain a motion to go into closed session, and we don't need anybody to remain.
Not initially, no.
Okay. So moved.
Very good job.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye.
Very good job.